Councilmember Joseph. Everybody ready?
We do not have councilmember Abudamos yet.
She logged on yet?
Yeah, not yet.
Well, wait for her. Anybody been in touch with her? I'll get her call. Alright, I got it. Hello. Marion.
I turned it off. Marion's not on yet, so I just made it.
Yo, Marion, hi. Okay. We'll have the city clerk send you the link again. Yes. Okay, she thinks she's in.
And she's in?
Very good, thank you. Virtual handshake, part of our ritual. Okay, we'll continue now.
She's coming on now. There we go.
There you are, okay, good. Everybody's here? We'll get started. Called a meeting to order, regular city council meeting for September 20th, 2022. Please rise and join me in the place of allegiance. Thank you all, please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
I'm here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marion Abudamos.
Here.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here. I think we need to turn up Vice Mayor Abudamos' volume. On our end or on her end? Just want to make sure we hear you. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
A little better.
I feel like a Verizon commercial.
Very good. Okay. So we have now, moving on in our agenda, report on closed session, confirmation of reportable action. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Your council convened in open session at 5:32 PM to address the matters agendized for closed session consideration. After determining there were no public comments on closed session, you adjourned then to address those matters at 5:32. You only addressed matters one, A, B, and C, and concluded that portion of the closed session at 6:34 PM. With respect to those matters, I will do a written report upon return from closed session under Government Code Section 54957.1. It's my understanding that the council will reconvene with respect to closed session agenda item number two at the conclusion of the open session. That would complete the report unless there are questions.
Any questions from council? Seeing now, Mr. Ross, thank you very much. We'll continue, proclamations and presentations. Well, it was a great pleasure this evening to have a presentation from the American Canyon 4H. Following that will be the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. So we have members of 4H here today. Very good, welcome. Good to have you all here.
Alright, thank you so much for having us tonight, and it is so wonderful to be here in person and seeing everybody's faces. So thank you. My name is Joy Malinowski. I am the American Canyon Club Leader, and this is my fourth year leading our club. Do you have our presentation by chance?
It's on the lap, it's on the floor.
Oh, okay, no problem, I got this. Sorry. Self-service, I got it.
You're in the driver's seat.
Alright, perfect. Our club was established in September, in September 2001, so our club's been around for about 21 years. And really, our mission is to inspire our young people, to help them learn and grow through hands-on learning. We teach them life skills that they can use for all of their life. And we are developing positive relationships between youth and adults. So it's a really great organization. Of course, I'm totally biased, and we have great kids that are in the organization. What people think of 4H, this is a picture of some kids feeding an animal. We do do this. We have a 4H farm here. And actually, as a side note, we just came back from the fair where a number of the kids, 13 of our 35 members, presented their small and large animal projects. Our club won third place in the Cecil Herrick Award, which is an award for participation at the fair. And that's really important to us because it means we're involved in a lot of different projects and activities. So I'm really proud of the kids for that. Individually, a lot of the, a number of the kids were grand champions, champions numerous first through eighth place. A few of our club members actually here tonight were in round robin. If you don't know what round robin is, they actually show all different animals for the first time. So it was really great to see them in those leadership roles doing that. They also, as part of these projects, learn how to run a small business because they are raising an animal. They learn about nutrition, health, and other things related to that. But there's so much more to 4H than just that. So these are four areas that we strive to work on with our kids every year. Science and STEM learning is one of those core components. Two years ago, we did a Mars project with the kids that was sponsored by NASA. This year, we're going to do oceans, so we're going to explore our oceans with the kids. And I'm pretty excited, we'll probably take them to like Monterey Bay Aquarium or something like that, which will be super exciting for them. Civic engagement, we are always trying to engage with our community and have them as a part of our 4H community. So we participate and provide community service through the, you know, some of the things that we've done is the Veterans Memorial Day, where we volunteered to help there. We put together packages for the troops. We helped the Parks Foundation and served hot chocolate at one of their moon hikes, so that was really fun. And we do attend all the fun community events that our community puts on, like the Fourth of July Parade, the Holiday Tree Lighting, and of course, the new one, that was really fun, Meet in the Street. So we always try to get out in the community and be a part of our community because it's important to us. Healthy Living this year, or last year, and then again this year, we will have a Healthy Living Officer as part of our Kids Officer Club. And in that, they come up with games, healthy foods, and other things we can do to promote health within our kids. And then finally, leadership, so some of the kids will speak tonight after I talk a little bit about the club. But they also, we have a leadership class that we spend a lot of time talking about as our community, which I just discussed, as well as a spark. So what we try to engage in the kids is for them to have a spark, something they're interested in. And so we use teaching, our volunteer parents and the kids come up with these project lists of the things that they want to do. Our curriculum is based on the UC Extension Curriculum, so it's a very robust curriculum that we use. And it's supported by our county office. And it's really hands-on learning and life skills that they can do throughout their life. And really, getting that spark in the kids is what we're looking for. So they end up developing lifelong friends and go to college and do great things throughout their life, and they use a lot of the things that they learn in 4H to do that. And the one really unique thing about our club that pretty much no other club in Napa County has is the 4H farm. So we really appreciate the city partnering with us to be able to use that land for this program. We raise animals there, we grow crops, we teach kids really that farm-to-fork mentality of like, how do you grow your food? So we also have an archery range down there, which gives them a lot of confidence. Because, you know, like pulling back that arrow in the bow and, you know, focusing on a target, learning directions and listening to an adult, all those things are really important for kids' development. So, that's our club. What's coming up new and exciting? We have open enrollment right now, so I don't know if you've seen our little signs we put around town, but we have open enrollment through December, so we'd love for people to join our club and be a part of it. It's not a huge time commitment, it's how much time you want to put into it with your kids. We also have a steer project that we are starting right now, and this is a depiction of that project. We're putting in four temporary, you know, steer pens and using some of the grasslands for feeding along the farm down at, down at the wetlands where we have our current farm. So we're really excited to get that project going. We will need to fundraise a little bit more in order to do it, but we're excited about that. And then finally, the last really exciting news is this 4H at the club. So we're partnering with our Boys and Girls Club to provide educational material similar to what we provide to our kids in our club projects, but in a little bit more condensed form. Third through fifth grade are the grades that we're targeting right now. And they get all that good stuff that I talked about earlier with community involvement, leadership, science. So they go through all those topics as well in a more after-school condensed form. So we feel that this is a great way to, you know, spread our wonderful teaching and all our learnings that we have to more of our community. So this is our club. These are all the fun things that we've done throughout this last year. I had to go through my phone and like get it all in there. But I wanted to call Kayla to the microphone, and she was just going to say a few words about her experience in 4H.
Very good. Hello, Kayla, welcome.
Hello.
Good to have you here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kayla Maynard, and this will be my 13th and final year in 4H. I spent the majority of my years in American Canyon 4H Club showing large animals, and I'm particularly excited for this year's up-and-coming steer project, especially since it will benefit our club members and community in so many ways. This will be my second year raising and showing a steer. Last year, I truly learned what it meant to work for your achievements. I was really eager to experience raising one of these amazing animals, and I was very lucky to find a place to keep my steer in Napa, something not a lot of kids get. And each morning and each night, I would drive to Napa, feed my steer, track his food intake, work with him, and every few days, bathe him as well. All of these hours and this work taught me a great deal of responsibility and what it means to take care of livestock, more so than any other animal has. Aside from this addition, eliminating the commute for me personally and allowing me so much more time to put into my 4H projects and my club, it would also give other members a chance to raise a steer who otherwise wouldn't be able to. Adding the steer facility to our local 4H farm is going to bring so many great learning opportunities for the future and youth of our town. And I really want to thank you again for your support and the chance for us to make this happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and then one more, Millie.
Hello, Millie, welcome. Good to have you here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Millie Kane, the Vice President of American Canyon 4H. We're so excited to be getting steer pens at our farm in American Canyon. We realize how fortunate we are to have a farm. We're up to this point, we're raising pigs, goats, sheep, and chickens, along with fruits and vegetables in our garden. The addition of these steer pens will really widen the opportunities for our club members at American Canyon 4H. It will help our club to grow by attracting a wider range of animal and farm enthusiasts from our community. My family and I moved here three years ago at the brink of COVID. Having 4H enabled us to find our own little community. For this and many other reasons, I hope that 4H continues to grow, and the building of these steer pens will really enable that. We truly appreciate all the help and support that our city council has given to us throughout the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and that's all we have. Thank you so much. I don't know if I take questions or I just go sit down, so you let me know. Thank you.
For the recording, what's the ages for the kids?
Yeah, ages for kids, five to 18. So it's really great, you know, to have that wide range, and we do a lot of different age-appropriate educational material, just depending on which kids sign up for what projects.
So your 18-year-olds that are graduating, what career course are they looking at, college or?
Yeah, so a number of them are going to Cal Poly, actually. Some of them are in animal science, different animal science courses. Engineering, my son, who graduated two years ago, he's going to be a police off, he wants to be a police officer, so he's going into criminal justice. And, you know, some of them go into the trades as well, electrical, welding, some of these skills that we're teaching them.
Very good. No, I think the, at least in Napa County, the school system is recognizing far more the interest in skill technical training. You know, one can earn a very good living doing that, so. Very good presentation. Brings back memories, having grown up on a ranch with steers and a farming community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Washington?
More of a statement than a question. I personally actually know your son, Austin, and I can attest that the things he learned from 4H, he brought on to his career because he worked as a security person for a firm that I'm associated with. And I could tell how responsible he was in comparison to some of the other ones at the same level. So I really, really think that what you're doing at 4H is doing a great job preparing young people for their future, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, like, we really appreciate your presentation. I think 4H really gives a very good sense of grounding for young people to understand responsibilities and achievement with a focused work effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next this evening, we have a presentation, American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, welcome.
Hello, thank you for having me. To hope that I can work the slideshow here. Well, hello, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Valerie Zizak-Mourais, your President, CEO of the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. Who are, who is the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce? We are a nonprofit organization that was established in 1994, only two years after the city of American Canyon was incorporated. We support local business, other nonprofits, and the overall economic vitality of the American Canyon business community through several different programs, including Destination Marketing and our Welcome Center. So we do a lot more than most people realize. They think we're just a little building off the side of the road that hands out maps, but ultimately, we have the economic vitality of American Canyon, first and foremost, in our, in our mission statement. What's on the horizon for the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce? Well, we're working to start a workforce foundation. This would include bridging our youth with local businesses. As most people know, we are in an employee shortage right now, so figuring out how we can keep employees working and living in American Canyon is at our first and foremost, you know, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little jittery, is at our first and foremost of the organization. You know, we are American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. We also run all of the Destination Marketing, which is our Explore American Canyon, and we're the Welcome Center as well. So we are almost three entities. Once we do our workforce foundation, that will put a fourth entity with us here. American Canyon Chamber of Commerce is governed by a Board of Directors. We have our Board Chair, Gladys Milligan, with Redwood Credit Union, Bill Harper, Red Valley Wine Warehouse, Elizabeth Goth, who is with American Canyon High School, Josh Mendoza with RE/MAX and American Canyon, David Griffiths, Eagle Vines Golf Course, Janelle Selig from the American Canyon Community Parks Foundation, Rick and Tyler Hess with RH Hess and Development, Paul Hicks with The Payroll, Clarence Mamoraw with Mamoraw Law, and Arvin Nishel with the UPS Store. As you notice, we have a diverse board made up in all different sectors of business, including nonprofit here in American Canyon. We do this so we can make sure that we're getting the most sound, clear vision of our business community, and we can work together as a unit in order to bring the business issues front and foremost within our organization. So, you know, special thanks to our Board of Directors. These are all volunteers, and they, they give their time graciously to our organization to make sure that we remain successful. The American Canyon Chamber of Commerce is a membership organization. We are made up of 211 chamber members, 34 impact partners, which means they support us at a higher financial level, wanting to be more involved, more of a partner in our organization, and then they have a bigger say and a bigger voice. We have 11 board members. We are, you know, we ran by volunteers as well. We have three staff members, and we do rely on youth and local community members to help fill in the voids within our organization. How do we support American Canyon? Well, we're here for business, as I mentioned. Advocacy at the local county and state levels, that means we show up and have a seat at the table. Multiple different organizations working around town, locally, county, and state to make sure we've got the most updated information, and we can bring that back to our business community, and taking their concerns and voice to those levels and being an advocate for them. Economic development and retention. We're here to make sure the business community's needs are being met. You know, for most of our businesses, we have a large, a large business, but they, they come with a lot of needs and a lot of requests from the, the city, the county, and the state. So we like to show up and make sure that we are that voice for them, and we're bringing their concerns back to the people that can change and make solutions for them. Solving workforce issues, including childcare, affordable housing, and transportation. We are here to, you know, make everybody who's working's lives a little bit easier. And clearly, with our traffic issues, our affordable housing issues, and our childcare, that is a big concern in the workforce. So we're working with local county agencies and state agencies in order to take the funding that is available and put it into the appropriate organizations to get these types of issues solved. We're working directly with the Napa County Office of Education to solve childcare issues, Napa Valley Transportation Authority in order, you know, to have a voice in transportation. And then affordable housing, we're working as a Napa Chamber Coalition in order to figure out what available housing is out there. How can we promote this to employees who want to come and work and live in the Napa Valley? You know, it's a glorious place to live, but if you don't have anywhere for housing, unfortunately, it doesn't make for a great environment for people. So we're really working to make sure we're getting to the bottom of these issues and moving it forward. Promoting American Canyon as a destination, as we continue to grow, our city is becoming more of a tourist stop. We have three hotels, two new ones on the horizon. We've got the Watson Ranch Project that's coming with our downtown. We've got a winery coming into town, so we've got great things that are going to be able to be used for our tourism besides just our trails and parks that we are currently known for at this time. We do run the local candidates forums. This is a great opportunity for us to highlight who your candidate, you know, who's running for council, for the mayor, and how, how they support business, how they support the community, what they stand for. So you'll catch us on the 29th of September with the, this year's candidates forum, so hopefully people can connect to that. We connect business with community. This is something that we hear time and time again, especially from our small businesses, is how do they get in front of the community? How do they connect with the residents? How can we bridge this lack of interaction between the American Canyon small business community and the residents? Which is why we came up with Meet Me in the Street, which was created to connect business with community. Welcoming new business to American Canyon, you'll see us around town with our red ribbon and our big giant scissors. Welcoming new business, we invite all of the residents out to participate in the ribbon cuttings. Everybody finds them a lot of fun. It's a great way to meet the new business and see what they have to offer, so you'll catch us doing ribbon cuttings. Networking, business-to-business networking, chamber-to-business, and chamber-to-chamber. We do networking events, we have our monthly coffee mornings, we do business socials, and we're just here to connect whoever needs connected, encourage our businesses to work together with each other. It makes for a better community, stronger community, when your businesses are all working together. We, we also support nonprofits. We have nonprofit chamber members. We have been connecting local resources from our businesses that are in the warehousing into our food pantry. We help promote our local nonprofit events. We're there for printing services. Honestly, the list goes on and on, but it's really, what do you need help with? We will figure out how we can help you with those items. So we're here for business, we're here for nonprofit, and we just, you know, we want to make a difference. So how do we make a difference? We collaborate. We work closely with both city and county agencies to assure we're meeting the needs of the businesses, as I mentioned. You know, there always has to be conversations going on behind the scenes in order to get things to move forward. And one thing we do is support new projects that come into American Canyon. So as these council members know, when there's a project that I'm passionate about or one of our members are passionate about, they get phone calls from me. They, they hear from me and how I'm going to be showing up and supporting. So it's encouraging growth, the type of growth we want to see in American Canyon and what makes sense for our community, and working together closely with the city, the county, and the state agencies. The chamber participates in other organizations to make sure we're bringing knowledge and resources to business. So we're part of the Western Association of Chamber Executives, where we get together several times a year, and we really work together to make sure that we are staying a relevant chamber and we're following the trends and how to bring back to your community what is valuable and what you need. We work with Cal Chamber very closely, make sure that we know what bills and legislative acts are coming through, where we want to support. We, we do our best to stay up to date on everything that's happening currently, staying relevant, the most up-to-date information, so we can pass that on to our businesses. Connecting business with schools, that's another one that's really important, especially in American Canyon with, you know, our schools being very young, especially our high school. We, we realize that there is a big separation between our large business community and being able to get money into our local schools. So during the pandemic, when they were not able to fundraise, we brought out our Bridge the Gap campaign, which we pulled in over $45,000 for local schools. We ran that strictly just to help get money into the VAPA programs. We do, we feature local artists in our Welcome Center, that's a lot of fun. You know, we get people from all over the world coming through there, and we featured the middle school art, we've featured the high school art. This year, we hope to feature some elementary school art. And we have done little receptions where you meet and greet with the artist, auction off the art, and put a little bit of money back into the program. So it's fun to be able to work with the schools and be able to come up with ideas like this. Just like we do our nonprofits, we work with our PTAs and our PTOs. Whatever they need from us, support, guidance, just, you know, any information about how to make your nonprofit more successful, we're here. We do internship opportunities for the students. Not only do we connect internship opportunities throughout our business community, we also take interns into the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce to work directly with them. So this is a way we can help the youth, help get them introduced to the business community, and really come out with some core values of work ethic when they graduate high school. We have a lot of volunteer opportunities, so we do use our youth for different events that we have around town. We also have adult opportunities as well, but we really like to focus on giving the youth an engaged opportunity in our community. We're working, we're launching a whole brand-new program this year that I'm really excited about. We want to do a junior market component to Meet Me in the Street. We want to do a junior market component to Meet Me in the Street and teach the kids from start to finish how to get a business license, how to, if they want to be a food vendor, how do you get the temporary food permit, and to come out there and really create their own business and bring it out on to the street and have all the permitting they need if they want to go attend other events as well. So we're really excited to work with the kids this year. We have had a couple students that we did that with this year individually, and it's great to see them out there all smiles. And we're working closely with the Key Club right now to mentor that mentor them on how to become community leaders. They came to me with requests on can you help us with events? So I'm teaching them how to, from start to finish, create a successful event all on their own, which has been a really fun program, and hopefully you guys will be seeing their events being launched here real soon. How do we spend our time? So we do have a staff of myself, a full-time employee, and two part-time employees, but we are in the office 40 hours a week. We work very hard. We're part of many committees. We run an economic development committee that is to make sure that our businesses' needs are being met. We're bringing in the type of business we want to see, hearing from the community on how to bring the business that they want to see to town and develop a real plan for American Canyon. We run a government affairs committee, which is working with our, you know, local state agencies to make sure everything from schools to, you know, bills that are being passed are being brought up and talked about and discussed. We take that to our board, who then will determine if they want to endorse projects, if they want to endorse measures, and what we want to get behind as a chamber voice. Everything we support does pertain to business. The American Canyon Executives is an exclusive networking organization that's underneath the chamber. We run our member engagement team, which is where we go and visit local new business, and we write little blogs about it and use it on our websites. We started a Napa Valley Chamber Coalition that includes all of the Napa Valley chambers, including Calistoga-St. Helena, Napa, Yountville, the Hispanic Chamber in American Canyon. We come together as one solid business voice for Napa County, and we're tackling countywide issues along with focusing on if there's issues within each city that we can, as a group, be a stronger voice and a bigger presence. We have the Green Island Road District. We meet, we do meetings with them to make sure that all their needs are being met. I'm part of the Napa Valley Transportation Authority Tax Oversight Committee for Measure T, where we're watching how all of those funds are being spent and making sure that our money is properly being used for our road projects here in American Canyon and throughout the entire county. I'm the board chair of the T-Bid, which is the Tourism Business Improvement District, which is the TOT tax that comes from the hotels. That's put back into marketing and putting, bringing people to our hotels here in American Canyon. I work with the City of American Canyon to, on a community calendar meeting with our nonprofits to make sure that we're not scheduling all of our events at the same time, that we're working together as a community to collaborate and to make sure we're being respectful of other organizations' time. So that's a, that's a great one that connects everybody. The guest information networking, I work with all of the other Napa Valley Welcome Centers to make sure that we're promoting the most up-to-date information and keeping everything that we're doing, you know, we're promoting American Canyon at the same time. Calistoga is promoting Yountville, and Yountville is promoting American Canyon, and we're promoting Napa, and we're working together to make sure that we're sending the visitors throughout the entire Napa Valley, so every city's receiving the benefits of the tour, the tourism industry. The Napa Valley Hospitality Industry Partners, this is a group of all different industry, Napa Valley partners, hospitality, so the hotels, restaurants, anything related to tourism, in helping solve the workforce issues. There is a huge employee shortage, especially in hospitality. So we're working together as a county to figure out how we can solve these problems. So those are just a few of the committees that we're part of. As you notice, we've got our hands in all different types of things, and a little bit of this and a little bit of that, really just trying to make a difference in the overall community. We also spend our time doing events. Meet Me in the Street, we launched in 2020, and it was, I'm sorry, 2021, and it was a huge success. So far, we've had five Meet Me in the Street events. Each one is becoming more popular. It is, like I mentioned earlier, to connect business with community, community with business. We do block down all four lanes of American Canyon Road between James and Elliott, and we fill it with food trucks, business table, nonprofit tables, county agencies. We bring out a live band. The chamber runs the bar. We've got a huge kid area. It's just a lot of fun, and each time we're adding different components to highlight our community. We brought out the jazz band. We hope to get the American Canyon High School Choir out there. We love to see our local nonprofits come out and set up booths and make some money while you're out there, so I hope to see more of the nonprofits using this opportunity. But we're really proud of Meet Me in the Street, and it's here to stay, and I appreciate, you know, all the support from everybody in the community. We wouldn't be able to do this without it. Ribbon cuttings, as I mentioned, chamber coffee chat, that's where we do our monthly networking. All the businesses come together, nonprofits come together, and we meet at Redwood Credit Union the fourth Thursdays of the month, have coffee, talk with each other, and then we bring in a guest speaker. We do have coffee chat this week, and it's going to be our Chief of Police, Rick Greenberg, giving us updates on safety in the workplace. So we're always addressing issues that we know would be beneficial beneficial to the business community, and it's it's a great opportunity just to connect with other businesses and nonprofits. We do business socials, which is an evening version of the chamber coffee chat, and we highlight a local business, have light bites, and everybody gets to network. Small Business Week, this happens every year in May where we highlight small businesses for the week. We do job fairs, as I mentioned multiple times, employee shortage, so this is more important than ever. Restaurant Week, in January, we take a week to highlight our restaurants. We do candidates forums. We help with the Halloween in the Plaza, which is where all the businesses are giving out candy. It's a great way for them to connect with the community. Magic of the Season, we run the Holiday Marketplace, and this is another opportunity for nonprofits and small business to come out and sell holiday items at our Magic of the Season event that we partner with the City of American Canyon. This year, new to the events list is the Mustard Festival. We're collaborating with the County of Napa, and everybody, every city throughout the county is going to be highlighting something during the mustard season, so that runs from January until March, and we're working to do a ticketed event with a food and wine pairing, along with a photo session out in the mustard, out at Wetlands, and more details to come, but it's going to be ticketed event, and hopefully people enjoy it, and I think it's going to be a lot of fun. So that's a little bit of how we spend our time. And what are we most proud of? The American Canyon Chamber of Commerce is proud to be a local organization that anyone in the community can turn to for guidance and direction. Whether you are new business or resident of our city working to get connected, a business navigating through challenges, or a local nonprofit needing support and education, we are here for you. Our doors are always open to each and every one in the American Canyon community. So I created our little tagline, Connecting Business with Community, and this is our graphic that goes along with that. So thank you all. Thank you to the council members, to Jason Hawley, to the nonprofits in the room, the chamber board members. There is no way that our organization could exist without the support of each and every one of you in the room. So we appreciate you all greatly and can't wait to keep doing great things here in American Canyon.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Certainly, we all, I'm sure, appreciate the the spark of energy, the collaboration, the dedication to the community. Great things have happened. Thank you. And congratulations again on Meet Me in the Street. Wow. Any questions from council members? If not, we'll move on in our agenda. Very good. Okay. Moving on in our agenda then. We take public comments on items not on the agenda. Anybody here wishing to speak on an issue? Good evening. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, council members. My name is Yvonne Boginsky, and I'm a member of the Vote No on Measure J Committee. Back in 2005, I saw this incredible movie at the San Rafael Theater. It was called Winged Migration. On the way back home from the film, on Highway 37, I was reading a newspaper article in The Chronicle about where a proposed casino was going to be built. As we were passing the area, right there on Highway 37, I saw it, and I told my husband to stop. I got out of the car, and I looked out over the ranchland and went from Highway 37 all the way to the top end of the estuary. And I said, they're going to build a casino here? This is an incredible space. I can't believe it. You all have passed this property as well, but now it's not a casino. It still looks pretty much the same now as it was back then, except now there's a sign out front. It says Sonoma Land Trust, and they've recently been awarded funding for an extensive wetlands restoration. The casino was moved to Ronert Park. Perhaps some of you have been to the Greaton Casino. I was involved in that project because of the ducks. I don't live near the property in question, the people involved. They're not my social group or my neighborhood, but I was there because we are destroying wildlife habitat and our own futures if we don't start protecting, regenerating, and restoring the lands that remain. Our San Francisco Bay Estuary is the largest on the West Coast. Estimates are that between 80 and 90% of it have become a dumping ground, infill, or drain for agricultural land. You have this experience here in American Canyon and know it well. What you proudly point to as American Canyon Wetlands was once a garbage dump just 40 years ago. As wetlands restoration advocacy and funding become more available, it is very clear that it's not just the 25 feet or so margin next to the water that needs to be restored. With sea level rise, we need to look at the land as an extension of the water and look at restoring inland as much as possible, and that means things have to change. They must. The times, well, they're not the same as they were back in 1855, when those wetlands were drained and leveled for agriculture. An estuary, a wetland, a marsh can no longer be disappeared because someone wants to earn more money. The common ground here is that jewel that you're all so proud of, that bay trail, the park, the people coming down, walking and biking and watching those birds. There's still a lot of work to be done out there, and I know that the city will be developing a wetlands restoration plan. But if you allow for land near the estuary to be cemented over and warehouses and buildings to go up, you will be destroying the very land that one day could be restored. Federal funding is available, and the upper lands of the estuary fit the criteria to apply for the funding. But I can't be out here by myself for those ducks or restoring the land. I can't compete with the deep-pocket investors who have not only donated to the campaigns of some of you on this council, but are also out in the community spreading false statements that are supposed to be sorted out by individuals at the voting booth. If Measure J, can I?
It's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Items not on the agenda?
I do have, I'm sorry, I was just waiting for in-person, but I do have one hand raised online. It's Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
This is Justin Hall. I wanted to shout out Erica. I just talked to her at the curb ramp on my, my house. I live in the corner. I probably need a curb ramp because I don't want the ball down because it's very nice to see what the worker doing, but all the curb ramps up for at night. I think we need one over by my house. So if if I want to walk or save anything, I can just walk on a curb ramp. So if Erica around, she can give me update about the curb ramp over by my house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
And one more thing, of course, Mayor. I just wanted to shout out for the Meet and Treat because I went to a co-op meeting with them, and co-op, very nice tool. I went with them on Zoom. It's very nice. It talks about the fire stuff. So if you see Erica, I hope she can give me more update there for a ramp. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers down the queue?
I have no other speakers.
Very good. Well, that would conclude our public comments on items not on the agenda. Move on now to the, any agenda changes? Consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion for the consent calendar.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion's second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mark Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember David Orow?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierre Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miriam Abadamas?
Yes.
Mayor Leon Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, council. Moving on in our agenda, public hearings. We have none this evening. Business items, item number 10, Introduction to Computerized Maintenance Management System, CMMs.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As Maintenance and Utilities Director Felix Hernandez just comes up to the podium, I think he also might have a presentation he wants to get loaded for you. But the purpose of tonight's item is meant to be informational in nature and talks about some of the systems we have in place and some of the new things we're looking at. Without further ado, I'll let Felix, Felix take over.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and good evening, public and staff. Felix Hernandez, Maintenance Utilities Director. Before we get into this presentation, quickly, a little background on the city's current CMMs, CMMs systems. The city currently has multiple systems. The Water Reclamation Facility uses Dude Solutions, whereas the Corporation Yard uses what's called Oprah. That's for parks, fleet, buildings. The water treatment plant doesn't currently have a CMMs, although there is a legacy system that is XC2 that is used to track backflow devices, roughly 5,500 out there in the system. In addition to that, the city also has a Customer Response Management, or 311, that would be See, Click, Fix. And what the the main concern here with these systems is it's really not a true CMS, CMMs, because these systems don't talk, they don't integrate with with one another. Staff have been evaluating this this software for well over a year, the various systems that are out there, capabilities, comparing them to current and future city needs, as well as the implementation and development process of those systems. So tonight I have with me David Hargan with Next Gen Asset Management, and he will be able to get into more detail of a CMMs and what the capabilities are of that system.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thanks for having me here. My name is David Hargadon, like Felix mentioned. I'm with Next Gen Asset Management, and the purpose of this brief presentation is to just give you guys an overview of what we do and how we might be able to help the city out with a couple of the issues that that you guys are experiencing. So. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So, like I said, we're Next Gen. I want to just go over who we are, our product, and the benefits of asset management, especially to the City of American Canyon, and go over some of our local clients, and then any questions that you guys might have for me. So we, our mission is to develop industry-leading asset management solutions that are innovative, reliable, and intuitive, designed to establish and sustain next-generation asset management intelligence. We're experts in asset management, leaders in technology, and strong believers in superior client services. We were developed in 2004. We're headquarters in Sacramento and privately held, and we specialize in municipal water, wastewater utilities, public works, and facilities. So we offer an enterprise solution for, you know, citywide, all departments. We offer a web application and also mobile applications for field users to be able to manage their work order, service requests, and any of the maintenance activities that are done in the field. We also offer what's called Next Gen 311, which is somewhat similar to the See, Click, Fix that Felix mentioned. It's an outward-facing customer service request portal where the the customers can report outages, water leaks in the street, really anything, and that comes into our system and creates a service request or a work order to be dealt with. We integrate with a bunch of other systems, GIS, SCADA, CCTV, 811. We integrate with a bunch of other systems, GIS, SCADA, CCTV, eight-one-one. And then one great thing about it is we have a transparent pricing model. So it's all, everything that we offer is included in one price, and we don't nickel and dime for different modules.
Generally speaking, what are the integration with GIS, et cetera? What are those things?
So GIS is your, the maps, like Esri Maps that tracks all of the horizontal assets, all your pipes.
Okay.
Yeah, streets, all of that, so.
Those acronyms stand for activities that do that type of work?
Yes, yeah. So before I dive into this, I quickly wanted to, and maybe you guys already know these acronyms, but I know CMMs has been brought up a lot. It's a computerized maintenance management system is what that stands for. In a lot of cities or organizations, they have, like Felix mentioned, they use a bunch of different systems to manage different things throughout the city, and that can cause some confusion. People aren't on the same page with certain things. So there's one side of a CMMs, which is the, the maintenance management. So that tracks all the asset inventory, service requests from, from customers, work orders, resources, preventative maintenance activities, any warehouse inventory, if you have that, inspections, things like that. And then there's another side, which is the asset management and capital planning. That's going to deal with more of the lifecycle planning, funding forecasts, the condition of all of your assets, risk analysis, the impact of failures, the probability of failures, and being able to create CIP scenarios. So what Next Gen is, is basically a combination of these two. So it takes the maintenance management side and combines it with the asset management side of things. So you're able to pull real data from the maintenance side and tie it into the asset management kind of decision-making side. It's a really powerful tool to be able to combine these two and, and have both, and all departments on the same page with these types of things. So that's kind of a little explanation about kind of what Next Gen is, how we combine the, the maintenance management and the asset management into one. So I know there's a couple of issues that Felix mentioned that you guys might be experiencing. One of them is outdated systems that you guys have, like Dude Solutions or, excuse, what's the name of the, Oprah? That's correct. So those two systems not really being able to talk to each other can cause some confusion and lack of efficiency when it comes to, to maintenance activities and financial planning. So, and then also the See Click Fix, so the customer-facing service request portal. That does not integrate with the CMMs that you guys currently have. And so we're hoping that we can offer some solutions to be able to fix those things and tie those together. So these are kind of four things that we think that we can be able to help you guys with. Being able to manage your maintenance activities a little more efficiently than you are now. Being able to continue with exemplary customer service, asset management planning, like I just was showing you guys with the funding forecasts and asset condition and all of that, and then also fiscal sustainability. So I guess I don't need to read all this to you. You can read it, read it right there. But basically, Next Gen is, it's an enterprise solution, so it encompasses everything that the whole city might need as far as maintenance and asset management. So with Next Gen, you have the advanced technology to evolve from your legacy, time-scheduled maintenance model to a proactive, future-forward system built by industry leaders. A few of the ways that we can help make your maintenance management a little more efficient. One of them is, we've got, like I mentioned before, the mobile and also the web applications. So the mobile applications are for Android, iPhone, tablets, phones, everything that your field staff might have to be, to use out in the field, to track all their work orders, all their service requests, and be able to, you know, see in real time the, the risk and the condition of each asset and be able to make decisions on the fly on what's, what's the most important thing to tackle in that moment. They're able to, to get to work quicker. I know right now with the See Click Fix, you know, if a, if a customer reports an issue, the city has to manually enter that information into the CMMs and decide whether or not, or who to send it to, and those things can take some time. And so with our Next Gen 311, it's directly tied into our system. So as soon as a customer reports something on Next Gen 311, and that can be through your city website or through an app that they download, that goes directly into Next Gen's system, and it creates a service request or a work order that gets fired off to whoever is in that department to, to take care of that. And it may be a leaking fire hydrant. In that case, you create a work order and go out and fix it and close the work order. It could be a neighbor's sprinklers are leaking, and it's not really a city problem. And in that case, you can close out that service request, and it automatically notifies the customer who reported it that that's been dealt with and figured out. Another good thing is just being able to communicate with the customers. So through Next Gen 311, the city can directly communicate via the messaging portion of 311 to let them know, just update them on the status of, of the service request that they submitted. So. Kind of went over this here. So that's a picture of, of one of the apps. It would be branded to, to American Canyon, if you guys wanted to have the app for that or on, on your website. And one of the, the biggest benefits to this system is that it's going to, the response times to these service requests is going to be a lot quicker because it comes right into the system right away, and the city is able to manage it and send someone out to fix it pretty quickly, so. Asset management plans, so this is something that's, that's pretty unique to Next Gen. Like I was saying, most cities or organizations, they either have a maintenance management system or an asset management system, and like I said, ours is combined. This is going to allow you guys to, to really track the condition of each asset, create funding forecasts for long-term planning, understanding the risk of all assets, and even being able to set your rates based on actual funding forecast for the future. If you guys want to create funding forecasts for five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five years out, it's a really, really powerful tool to be able to, to make smart plans based on real data that you guys are getting, so. Performance reports, we have a, a pretty robust reports module. You guys are able to create custom reports, ad hoc, standard reports, favorites. Next Gen even creates reports for you guys at no charge. Being able to capture all of that data and actually turn it into something is a really, really powerful tool for cities. And I did notice the next agenda item, I think tonight is on KPIs. We do focus a lot on that, being able to actually take that data and, and visualize it and do something with, with that data. It's pretty powerful. So the reports module is something that a lot of cities use pretty heavily. And one last thing I wanted to hit on is fiscal sustainability. So I know you guys may be aware of the California State Revolving Fund. That's available to cities like you guys, and they do require a fiscal sustainability plan or an asset management plan to be able to disperse those funds, and that's what we offer. Our asset management planning system can push out those reports for you guys and, and give you those financial plans to be able to receive those funds. So these are a couple of screenshots of our software kind of showing what the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five years would look like as far as budget and funding forecasts, risk analysis, being able to prioritize what maintenance activities are the most critical to tackle, and being able to defer certain maintenance activities that might not be as critical for a year, two, three, four, five years out, and really be able to make different scenarios and be able to plan better. So that's a little bit about, about what we offer, and we're hoping that we'd be able to, we really think that we could help out the city of American Canyon by updating these systems and being able to help you guys pull all this data out and, and really do something with it to help benefit the city, so. Thank you. Oh, yeah. So here's some local clients that we've got around in the area. Like I said, we're based in Sacramento, so we've got a pretty heavy, heavy presence around here. We've got clients all over the country, but these are some of our local, local clients here. So that's the end of my little presentation, and I don't know if you guys have any questions. We're open to questions or comments.
Thank you for the presentation. I think there might be some questions from council members here. So it sounds like there might be cost savings realized out of this. What can we project for American Canyon? If we're more efficient, it usually means you're saving money.
Yeah, in the long run, definitely.
So any guess what that might be, or what's happened with some other cities that you have installed?
I mean, definitely being able to streamline your processes is, is going to save you money. It's hard to say. Every city's different size. They have different systems, they have different processes. But for sure, being able to streamline and, and being able to tie all these departments together and being able to, to share data is huge. There's definitely a lot of cost saving when it comes to that, so.
I think I saw Benicia on that list, is they're comparable sizes. Anything you could, could measure their terms of economics?
I'm not sure I've got numbers for you, but I'd be happy to, to get those for you and get back to you. Yeah.
Thank you.
On Benicia.
Assets, so movingable equipment, pumps, things like that?
Yep, everything.
Does that include streets, sidewalks?
Yep, yep. All vertical, horizontal assets, yeah. Pump stations, water treatment plants, parks, facilities, yeah, street signs, lights, valves, everything.
Skateboard park?
Yeah, yep, everything.
Thank you.
Welcome.
That's Councilman Orol.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Listen, first of all, I'm super supportive of modernizing our, our systems. I think we did a run at that in finance, and we were duly impressed. Got a few questions for you, but first a comment. CMS to me means content management systems, but thank you for.
Yeah, CMMs.
Oh, CMMs.
Computerized maintenance management system.
Tell me, how long does it take to integrate your system or on-ramp us if we were to bring you onboard? What's that process?
So it, it really depends on a couple of factors. I think if there's, you know, buy-in with all the staff, you know, change management is, you know, it sometimes is a struggle, but getting people, if, if people know that what they're doing currently is clunky and they can see the benefit in switching, usually there's, there's pretty good buy-in. And we have our own, so we're the developers of this software and the implementers. So that's pretty unique. A lot of systems will develop the software, but they have a different company that implements it. So we're, we're proud that we are, are both. So we stick with you guys the whole way through. It could be anywhere from, from six to twelve months, maybe, implementation. Don't quote me on that, but that.
And it includes, obviously, the price includes the, the training and all of that that goes with it. Okay. You showed data there, financial data, et cetera. Our finance department earlier this year showed OpenGov, which we were very impressed with, and they seem to be a platform for municipalities, particularly on financial reporting. Do you have any integration with them at all to make that a little bit easier? Because we're looking here, and I already see, if we're going to have two systems, how do we report these out and how do they make that job easier?
For financial?
Yeah, well, finance, there's finance in there that you showed in terms of costs and things like that.
Okay, yeah.
Don't mean to steal this thunder here, but, but having spent over a year on this, the, the Next Gen does integrate with Tyler Technologies. And as David mentioned previously, there are other software systems out there that we've looked at, but the, the key piece is people will sell the software, but they don't do the implementation or the integration. Whereas Next Gen will do both and not, just stating the facts of what I found. I'm not advocating for one or the other, but. And Tyler being that, being that financial system, when we first started working on this, Mr. Bogart was with the city, and, and we did consult with him on this and made sure that it met finance's needs.
Okay, great. One more comment, one more question. I agree with the mayor here. Next time on the presentation, it'd be great to have a case study of municipality that had some savings because I know the initial investment upfront is a lot, but over time, it, it will save over cost. So like a case study of a comparable municipality. Second question, we're on, it's a year later, two years later, three, four years later. We are loving this, but there's a better solution of this. How do we get out of it?
So Next Gen is.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I could have answered, but I'll let you answer.
I was just going to say that Next Gen, we really strive to, to be at the top of our game all the time. We're always taking comments and suggestions from clients on how to improve our software. We have our own development team, implementation team, integrations team, and we're always striving to be the best of the best.
Well, I, I know how technology is sold, and it gets stickier over time. And, you know, I was just wondering if there's, it's probably a question for Felix. How do we get out of it if, if we're not happy with it?
Well, great question by one, Councilmember, Councilmember Orol. Currently, it's the, this two, kind of a two-phase approach is that first, the software, there's a, there's a fee for that, right? Then the, the integration and implementation is a fee. So once you get past that, we integrate everything, right? Then it's a yearly, it's a yearly, it's like a subscription, like we, we pay with Net, See Click Fix now. If we get out, we simply don't renew that contract. Now, can we, that means we're not storing data. The data that we have, we'll still have the, the platform, but we're not able to store data because Next Gen hosts that data in the cloud. And it would be very similar to what we, what we're going about right now, right? We would evaluate and say, what, what are the pros and cons to a newer system as opposed to staying with the existing systems? I will point out that the, the systems we have now, it's not necessarily that they're, they're not as functional. They, they function, but fragmented.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So, so as we have this larger system, I would presume that we can expect that to be something that we will use in the, in the long run. And it's, yeah, and it's something that we did evaluate as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
See, Council, Vice Mayor Abadamas has her hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I have a particular interest in See Click Fix. The way that it works currently is terrible, and the biggest reason for me that I dislike it is its interface, its response to our constituents. Oftentimes, somebody will, you know, send in a See Click Fix saying a fire hydrant is leaking, for example, and then they'll just receive a message saying that the, the matter has been resolved or the case has been closed or whatever the verbiage is. But in fact, there is no resolution, and that causes frustration. In practice, how is this actually going to work? And how, I understand that you can communicate directly with the constituents, but how is this actually going to work? And that might be a question for Felix or Jason to, to let us know how we are going to handle that part of it. Jason, you are well aware of my frustration as well as other council members' frustrations with See Click Fix, and maybe you can speak to that.
Sure, actually, Vice Mayor, I'll let Felix kind of take a crack at it. I think he's prepared to answer the question.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Abadamas. I will start by saying I share your frustration. The, the way this happens now is some, something comes in from See Click Fix. We have the, be candid here, it's admin staff that receive that. They push it out to, to staff, and that's not always, probably not, not always the right way. Because we have admin staff trying to determine what that work should be. Whereas when we develop and we build this particular platform, we work with the, with the consultant to say, who does that go to, right? Does it go to supervisor, does it go to manager, or does it go directly to field staff? And when that, when that information gets directly to field staff, they're responding right now. They're there. It's not, it's not this, this lag time of receiving the thing, entering the information, trying to push it out, then getting a manager or supervisor or something to then direct staff to go do it. It's going right to staff. They're out there already. And I will point out something that I just thought of as we're going through this presentation is, the question was about efficiency. How do, how do we, how do we see efficiency? I'm seeing staff already being out there in that area. We know, because we can, through, through these newer systems, we know location, the location of the staff. We have our tablets that shows location. We're able to, to push things out to whoever's the closest. So we're not driving back to the corp area. We're not driving all the way across town. We're able to respond right there. Staff gets there, they see it, they put the notes in there, they can close it out if it's been fixed. Or here's my notes, and those notes then go directly to that person that reported that, that problem. So they have an instant feedback on what's happening in the field. So, they have an instant feedback on what's happening in the field.
Excellent, so then they have an opportunity to follow up directly based on those notes as well?
That's correct.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. When I asked the issue a few months back, talk to us about our, the work order management system. What I was really interested in beyond just a, a good general description of how things work was the output reports, the, the monthly reports that might be generated, whether the systems talk to each other or not. So that how do we know on a monthly basis or whatever basis, how many complaints we got, how many we handled, how many are still outstanding? In terms of preventive maintenance and scheduled maintenance, you know, how much of that was assigned, how much of it was completed, what's outstanding? In other words, how do we get management information that you can then use to say, we're doing a good job, we're not doing a good job, what's getting done or not? And I'm not hearing that we have those kinds of reports. Now, I appreciate the fact that a lot of antiquated systems don't do that very easily. But I'm reminded many years ago when I was a crime analyst in the Fresno Police Department and, you know, we had a manual system and I wanted to be automated because I assumed an automated system would be faster, quicker, smarter. And what I learned is if you don't have a good manual system, automating it doesn't make it any better. So, I wanted to find out what your manual system was and what does it do and, and what information do we get and use routinely? So, that was really my, what I was hoping I would get. And reading between the lines, what I'm getting is that we don't have that kind of management report. And that concerns me because I'm wondering how do you operate when you don't have that kind of summarized, regular data? So, that's, that's the first concern. Then the second one, if we move to NextGen, I, I, I'm curious, what is, what are those costs? What's the software fee, the integration fee, and then the annual service contract?
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Joseph. The first part of that question is, we, we currently do not have the capability in some of the existing software systems. Although See Click Fix, as, as is noted in the staff report, since implementation in 2015, we have, um, we have responded to and closed 2,606 responses, right? And, and reports, things that have been reported to us. That, Oprah, I believe, also has the capability of doing that. Dude Solutions and, um, and the XC2 do not. So, we do have some data and the other, the other pieces of the data come, come through as the old-school way. The, um, the hard copy paper reports as well as phone logs when we get calls. So, the state actually requires us in, in the water system that we log every single complaint that we get and we report that out every year.
Okay, good.
I want to touch on your second part of the question as well. The, the second part of the question was related to cost. It, it is very dependent. It depends on how large of a system we want to develop. For instance, if we were to only do the maintenance and utilities department, the cost would be much less than if we were to include engineering or planning. These newer systems can, can work citywide across all departments. Right? Planning, finance, public works, maintenance and utilities. So, it all depends on what it is, what, what we reach for, right? How, how large of a system do we want? And, and then the annual fee is also dependent on that. Similar to See Click Fix or Laser Fiche or any of the other software thing, app platforms that we have, it's all about the number of seats or how many people you can, can be on there. If you have 10 people, 20 people, 30 people, 50 people. So, again, it depends on the sizing of, of the system will, will determine the cost.
Well, just so that I have a sense of the range, what if we had a completely robust program versus the bare minimum? So, I...
I can, um, what I have evaluated so far is I would say that we're looking at 150,000 to, you could get upwards of 500,000. And that would be not a yearly expense. That is the, the first-year licensing as well as the integration and the implementation.
And then the annual fee?
And then the annual fee after that, I want to say I recall it being anywhere from 50,000 to 80,000? Okay.
One of the other things I wanted to add in here, and we appreciated, Councilmember Joseph, the, the comments and requested for some of the information. We, we, like Felix noted, had been looking into these sorts of systems for the better part of a year. So, it really was sort of some convenient timing to have the, the request for this item kind of lining up with the, the work that staff was already doing. The main purpose of tonight's, um, item was not as much about, you know, the costs or the estimate, which is why we have, you know, we have such a wide range of what this might cost, but to really take the, the council's temperature on evolving to this kind of technology. We have, again, some of these legacy systems that are disconnected. We could probably start to assemble, um, reports from the different pieces and try to have them make sense of it all. We're not using those reports in a lot of our decision-making right now, which is, you know, one of the fundamental pieces that we're doing, partly because we don't and really haven't ever used those reports in a lot of decision-making. We may gather the data and say, okay, what happened after the fact? But we don't, we aren't using them in a kind of prospective way. And so, we're always trying to look at what technologies might be out there in a way to, to have more efficiencies and more connectedness amongst the, the departments and the community that we're looking to serve. So, that was already in process and bringing, you know, forth a, a concept here from a vendor as, you know, as an educational piece. So, the, the costs are, you know, roughly, you know, a, a large implementation cost right at the front and then you have your annual maintenance pieces that would be. But, um, tonight wasn't about, it's not an action item, it's not an appropriation and it's not any sort of action. It was really to, to say, this is what the world of CMMs looks like today. This is what the contemporary, you know, cutting-edge looks like. What's our, you know, what's our perspective on it?
Okay. One other question on, on integration with, I guess it's Tyler is the brand of OpenGov. Does it integrate or not? I mean, can you plug in the asset data from your module to suddenly plug into our capital budgeting? So, that will actually work?
Yeah, so I gotta quickly jump in here. So, Tyler Technologies is an ERP, which is our, a financial system we've been looking at, separate from the financial system we currently have. And so, separately, I've been looking at it financial systems. OpenGov is a transparency tool. It's, it's a budgeting tool and it's a forward-facing tool for stories, data, documents and budgeting. It's not the full ARP, ERP. So, it, uh, OpenGov, the module we have, does not do accounts payable, accounts receivable, utility billing that you would have in an ERP. So, we are looking at Tyler Munis. We've been, uh, working with Napa County and, and City of Napa actually on, on their development of using Tyler Munis as the ERP. This, um, this particular system integrates with both. Both OpenGov, because OpenGov is really just a set of storytelling and graphs and, and budget data. So, it integrates with both OpenGov and Tyler Munis, like we've heard, which is more of the financial system. So, um, again, just wanted to provide some clarity. Tyler Munis and OpenGov are not the same thing. One is a financial system, one is the transparency reporting tool.
Okay. For the, that it does also integrate with Springbrook. Springbrook is currently used by the city and does integrate with that as well?
Correct, so going to something like this wouldn't require us to change our financial system. It wouldn't drive another change.
That was gonna be my next question, but, okay.
Buying a trailer and then having to get a new truck, which I had to do.
Okay, the, the only other thing is that I have come across other systems that are also reasonably comprehensive and enterprise. Maintain X, for example. I don't know the full cost for an enterprise, but I would certainly hope that if we are exploring this, that we do look at different packages. They may not be as robust, but they may not cost a half a million either. So, I hope when we come to phase two, we have some choices that range from, you know, the full Cadillac version to something that's more economical, because a good Toyota is, is a nice car to have as well. So, you know, just, you know, just, if you, if you're looking for my feedback, it would be if, if we want to explore this, let's explore all the options, including some that maybe aren't as robust, but are, might be more economical. And then the last question, I know converting anything, we have all of the detailed assets. You know, all the parks, all the roads, all the, all of that data is in some fashion that we can, you know, digitize and give to NextGen and they can upload preventive maintenance schedules for all of our equipment, all that kind of nitty-gritty stuff that is part of the integration effort.
We do, we have, um, the standard, standard operation manuals come with the preventative maintenance schedules. And as well as the mapping is, I know engineering is working through GIS and ESRI. That, that mapping is able to be used in not only this platform, but other newer platforms. I'd also like to, to point something out, and I know we, we're, we're gonna talk about costs, but as, whatever system we go with, we, we, if it integrates, if it integrates other systems, I mean, those systems, we take that data currently, like you're, like you had said, we can take that data that's stored. Once it gets into the new system, those systems go away. So, those, those licensing fees that we're paying for those four or five systems goes away.
Okay, do we have a sense of what that is?
Not offhand, we do know what it is. I don't know what it is offhand.
Okay, that would be helpful too, because offhand, whatever efficiencies we achieve may not be a half million. But if we're spending, you know, 10 or 20 grand right now and that goes away, then that certainly makes it a more appealing case. So, uh, those, those are my general comments.
Yeah, I think looking at other options, it's always a wise thing to do. I'm getting a sense that maybe this also gives us a way to analyze, be aware of our, our capacity to do things. You know, if it's, uh, you mentioned engineering, well, engineering can also be connected to public works, could be connected to, uh, uh, other services we provide. I'm just getting a rough idea of how this thing, this process works for any system like this. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can touch on that more is that this, when we, you know, like, um, City Manager Holly had stated that it's, it's been a year that we've been, we've been evaluating and, and looking at different systems. And really, we took the strategic approach. The, in fact, the, the new sewer camera that we purchased, and thank you to council for approving that purchase, it has GIS and ESRI into it. So, as we're out, as staff are out and we're, we're using whatever system are, for our, our work order system and where that data's going into that, the new system, the new platform, it also integrates directly with, with engineering. Because the, the tools that we have out there in the field are more technology-based and more capable. So, it's, it's, there are all these pieces to the puzzle that we're, we're putting together and, and to help the city really be more efficient. And I'm completing CIP things that we're working on as well as preventative maintenance and response times for customer, um, concerns.
Sounds like a thing of the future, definitely. Councilmember Washington?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'll be real brief. I, um, I'm just, I'm listening to what, what you guys were saying earlier and I'm just trying to see that comparison. I actually, in my day job, we use SAP and it sounds like it's almost identical to what we're using. And I was just trying to see if there's some type of benchmarking that was done to kind of find out. I like what I hear. But is it along the same lines as, as what SAP provides?
I'm, I'm, I'm not certain. I don't know if David is certain he's...
It's a similar product.
Okay, yeah.
We focus more heavily on the asset management, funding forecasts, risk analysis.
And more designed toward municipal, um, okay. Okay, yeah, but it's, it sounds like a pretty good system, I, um, in comparison to what I'm, I'm using.
Councilmember Oral?
Yeah, I, I think this whole category is what they call enterprise resource planning a little bit and they had a bunch of acronyms on there, but basically it's a tool for that. SAP will probably cost you 10x and probably won't work. I've heard too many horror stories, but, you know, unless you're a large organization. Listen, I think a, a big part of this conversation is delivering exemplary services as a city and enabling and empowering our city staff to do that. And in order to do that, we need to invest, we need to modernize our systems here at the city. And, you know, I hear the concerns on budgets. I think these are probably cost-effective, uh, over the long term. But in order to get to those services, you really have to invest and there's some money that has to be spent upfront. And I think, you know, if this comes in at a reasonable price, I see no reason why we can't move forward with an option like this in the future. Would love to see more, would love to see some case studies of some sort. We don't even have to see it in a presentation. If you could, Felix, if you could take the action to, to get us some stuff and we can look at it, you know, outside of a meeting, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'd be interested also on the cost side, the cost over time. We're investing X amount of dollars upfront, we have a monthly fee. What is the benefit we realize economically over time? Is it a five-year term to recover our initial costs or is it a 10-year term? Something like that would be helpful to, as a selling point, I think. And again, comparing with other similar products.
Right, thank you. That, that's my interest that we compare to other products. The case studies are important because, you know, any presentation will look good, but, but actual practice tells us whether it works out or not. So, I think these are all good ideas.
Sure, we're, case study, you can call somebody up and say, hey, tell me they're real skinny on this thing.
And if they're nearby, Benicia, for example, you know, if they're having a great time with it, that's, that's important to know. Thank you.
All right, council, ready for public comment on this? Any public comment on this matter?
I have no hands raised.
Okay, anybody in the audience wishing to comment? Seeing none? We'll close public comment. And this was an informational item. Okay, very good. Thank you for the presentation. It's informative. Again, having some experience in, uh, technology and programming computers many years ago, just make system, it's systems type of thing. And I think I'm beginning to grasp what the overall picture looks like, you know? Yeah, in terms of efficiency.
Thank you, Mayor Castle.
Thank you for coming. Okay, back to our agenda. We have another item. Key performance indicators. This is another information item.
Correct, Mayor and council, thank you. This is a, a follow-up discussions we had during our current budget process, uh, back in, in May and June and somewhat of an evolution almost on the topic we just heard. But, um, you know, in, in general, uh, the area of key performance indicators is something that we've been focused on for a, a little bit now and our last couple of budgets have identified, uh, performance indicator, key performance indicators in them. But we're continuing to kind of evolve and, and, uh, set them up and then use the information in ways that we hadn't done, uh, previously. And so, we're trying to be more, more thoughtful about the information. So, again, we, we had the KPIs in our prior budget and in the 21, sorry, the 22, 23 budget. But we wanted to, um, really refine them. And so, there were actually, the council appointed, uh, an ad hoc committee of, of the council and it was Councilmembers Joseph and Washington and they joined city staff back in May to have a kind of a working session, um, on the, the KPIs that we currently have and to put some more, uh, food for thought into them. Work's not done, but this is meant to be, you know, a check-in with the whole council because there were, um, a couple of changes that we agreed to. My friend, there were a couple of changes that we agreed to, um, back when the, when the group met. And so, uh, we felt like it would be good to check in with the council before proceeding too much further. The, the first change that we were, uh, really thinking about was, had to do with the nature of, of the KPIs themselves. In the budget document, we are really, um, taking these KPIs and we were really trying to orient them around the city's six goals that, that we have that are adopted. And those actually show up in the, in the packet on page 62. And we were trying to orient all of these KPIs to fit in one of those boxes. And there's some instances where they might fit in one box, two boxes, or maybe zero boxes and they might still be important KPIs. And we felt like we were, at least staff felt like we were spending a lot of time and energy making them fit into a certain box when maybe that wasn't necessary. The whole, um, purpose of developing KPIs and, and monitoring and gathering information is really around that sixth goal. You know, organizational effectiveness, delivering exemplary government services. And the whole process of having a KPI is really that sixth goal and we don't really need to then have each of those fit into one of the other five. And so, kind of trying to break free our mind of, uh, trying to put one of those in each one of the other buckets too. If we just say this entire process is really goal six, then we can really find out what are the best KPIs? What are the most relevant, what are the ones that have the information that's attainable? So, that was that, that first change, um, that, that we kind of agreed to. The second change is really not a change. I think it's more of just maybe a clarification or, again, an evolution of, of thinking is to acknowledge there are different types of, of KPIs. And this is what the, the staff report kind of gets into. But, you know, there are some KPIs that are what we'll characterize as statistics. there are some KPIs that are, what we'll characterize as statistics, and these are numbers, they're data points, and in and of themselves, these data points are not good, bad, or, or otherwise, but if you gather a, a couple of years' worth of data, a couple of months' worth of data points, what you can then kind of develop is a trend line, you know, are things improving, increasing, decreasing, staying neutral? You can develop that trend line, and that starts to tell a story. And, and I'll, I'll give an example, a number of lane miles in the city is just a number of the miles of roadway that is in the city. We have a hundred and two, I think, is the lane miles that are in American Canyon. It's not good, it's not bad, it's just a number of lane miles. If you track the lane miles over the last, say, three decades, that number would have been increasing, and so then that trend line of increasing would, would start to tell a story, but having eighty lane miles, or ninety lane miles, or a hundred lane miles, or a hundred and ten lane miles in of itself is not really a performance metric. Where you start to tell a story is that the trend line itself. So we wanted to orient ourselves around this, this idea that sometimes our KPIs are just statistics, and you have to track them over time to get the trend line, but the statistic itself doesn't have a lot of meaning unless it's part of a trend. There are other kinds of KPIs that we kind of define as metrics, and these are pieces of information themselves that can be measured against another standard, or against a baseline, or against what somebody else is doing, to try and compare, you know, compare ourselves. And these, what we compare ourselves, the, the standard, if you will, that we compare ourselves against, is very much a council policy decision. The council would develop a policy around a particular standard, and it's then that metric that we would compare ourselves against, have we met that metric or not? And so it's very much more of a evaluation, you know, if, if the metric, for example, as it relates to streets, there is something known as the pavement management index. And pavement management index is a metric, it's a measure of the quality of, of a street, it's a measure of, you know, how good the roadway surface is, does it have a lot of potholes, is it gravelly, or is it smooth? And so the, the council would adopt, you know, taking, the council would adopt a standard for PCI, and again, that's the power of the council to adopt these kind of policies and standards, say, we want to have a PCI of seventy, and then we would gather those index ratings across the city, and we would say, okay, this year, the standard was seventy, and ours was sixty-five, or it was sixty, and we'd be able to compare ourselves to that, that standard. And that, that policy setting exercise that the council goes through is meant to be informed on, on a couple of things. You would get the professional advice from staff to say, you know, in, in the case of pavement, you know, PCI of a hundred is really expensive to maintain, everything looks really good, but it's really expensive, and a PCI of fifty is really, really, really costly to, to fix, and seventy is this kind of magic tipping point, because asphalt kind of has this tipping point of the nature of the material, that it's more cost-effective to fix it at seventy than at fifty, and it's like five times more cost-effective to fix it at seventy than fifty. And so you'd get that professional recommendation, you'd talk to the community, and the community would say, we, you know, we don't like bumpy roads, but we also don't have a bunch of money, and your interactions with the community, we would tell the story about what, what KPI is, and asphalt, and you would then hear from the community about what standard they were willing to live with and willing to pay for, and then you would put that value judgment into a standard that would say seventy, and then staff would go back, we'd gather that information, we would compare ourselves, and we'd tell the community, you know, our, our KPI this year in the city was sixty-five, or it was seventy-five, or what have you. So it's a totally different kind of KPI, much more of the, the measurement, or sort of that comparison kind of KPI. So we wanted to kind of make those distinctions, because previously, as we had put them in the budget document, they're all meshed together, and we hadn't kind of separated them. And so that was an important distinction, at least particularly for staff, as we started trying to orient how we might manage different aspects of the city, knowing that one's a statistic with trends, and the other is an actual metric to be compared against, as we searched for things to compare against, it was important for us to, to make those distinctions. Pages fifty-eight and fifty-nine start to give some examples. Again, we give some examples on page fifty-eight of example statistical KPIs, and the, these are really mostly numbers, number of development permits, number of inspections, number of volunteer hours, volume of wastewater treated, volume of water served, those sorts of things that you would gather over time to, to create a trend line. And then going on to, to page fifty-eight are some examples of metric KPIs, again, pavement ma, pavement condition index, fire response times, average plan review times, those sorts of things that we can compare against others, we can compare against the standard that we set for ourselves. You know, as it relates, this is also where you can relate to service lines and, and financial aspects of it, and it's probably easiest to think about it as it relates to the utilities. Potable water, cost per unit sold, for example, i- is a metric of the water that we sell, how much does it cost? And the, and the performance part of that is, you, you set it towards your rate, right? If, if you set a, a rate of two dollars a unit, and you're selling things for, you know, if it's costing you two fifty a unit to, to sell, that becomes the standard, that becomes the, the piece that you have to look at to say, you know, either our rates are not in the right place, or our process needs to be able to, to drive that cost lower per unit. So you, you start to be able to fold in a financial aspect of the service as well, and not, it doesn't just have to be performance, you know, like I mentioned with PCI, Payment Condition Index, it can layer into a financial aspect as well. And, and you can do that financial aspect into other lines as well, cost per mile maintained, things like that. So it's, the metrics, and the, the list that we show on pages fifty-eight and fifty-nine are not exhaustive, these are just an example list, we need to continue to refine it, but it's in those metrics where you can start to then layer on the financial aspects of it, cost per, you know, acre maintained of park, that sort of thing. So those are the way the, the metrics would, would ferret out, but we wanted to kind of separate those between statistics and metrics. And lastly, although I don't note it in the, in the staff report, but there was interest in the committee of really orienting these KPIs around the, the service line of delivery, which, you know, is typically related to the departments that we have, but departments do kind of change over time, but it's really meant to be around the, the service line. So for our parks and facilities, cost per unit maintained, or a cost per service delivery, and, and really thinking about it, how the community might, might see those services that are, that are being provided. So again, orienting not around, you know, the goals that had been set, but orienting around the services that are delivered, and, and really acknowledging that these are all part of that last sixth goal. As far as next steps, the, the next steps would be for staff to get back together, start adding on or refining some of these both statistics and metrics, and then to meet again with the ad hoc committee, and to really finalize these lists. We would expect in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, that we would have a more refined list, making these distinctions, explaining, you know, what these are measuring and, and why. And then lastly, working on a way to display this information, you know, to display the statistics and their trends, to display the metrics and their comparisons, are we comparing favorably or not to the benchmarks that we've set for ourselves, and to visually display those instead of, again, just words on paper. So those are all some of the next steps, but for now, we wanted to check in with the council, and, and to kind of share some of the evolutions of our thoughts, and of course, answer any questions or get any, any feedback.
Thank you. I just beginning to understand this a little better. I like the, what you're proposing coming forward, I appreciate what the committee's done here. I think some of these things, for me, differentiating between statistics and metrics, a lot of the, to my mind, some metrics, some statistics may have metric components to it. And I think somehow, there has to be a way of, so we did the job, how good a job did we do, type of thing, so there's a measure of quality of work. I think I was trying to find one here on vehicle, vehicle miles in the city.
Right.
So that's a statistical.
Mm-hmm.
But pa, patient, uh, pavement condition index is a metric of those vehicle miles, right? And I think probably even going further with that, not digging too deep into the woods, but how many miles do we have at a hundred, how many miles do we have at each one of those component numbers, would say the work order that needs to be, get the most attention. Does this fit with the previous presentation we had? Can it be?
Yeah, I think, oh, a way to view that last presentation would be, some of the tools that might be needed or might be helpful in gathering the information, whether it be statistics or, or the metrics, you know, all of this is the information, and, and you can only report and compare to the extent you have that information. So, you know, we do have tools now, and we are looking at the contemporary tools that are out there in the universe, that's what the last presentation was about.
I think some of the more challenging ones, like you have, uh, there's several in here that relate to people responding, you know, and then raises the question on the metric side, how do we do the outreach? Who do we get to the, respond? Who are the, are the people who typically respond to, for example, the city webpage on, several times have asked information like that? Who doesn't respond on webpage?
Yeah, you bring up a really interesting point, some of the metrics that we might, and they're not, many of them aren't listed here, but we might be thinking about is customer satisfaction. You know, how, how do we know that customers are satisfied with their experience? And you could, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll give an example of how these interplay might, might happen. Number of volunteer hours, or number of participants, for example, in a, say, a community event, is just the number of participants in the event. It doesn't necessarily describe whether they liked it or not. So the, the statistic might be just the number, but what you might also then have is some kind of a standard, says we want eighty percent of our participants in the Fourth of July Parade to have had a positive experience. And so how would you know that, right? So you would need to then work on asking those participants, or asking the community in general, what their satisfaction was. You would, you would survey the community, but, but to your point, as you do those feedback tools, really making sure how you're surveying the community and how you're asking them for your feedback, doesn't artificially limit that response. If you're only using a website, or if you're only using certain tools, the people who respond are only in that little, that little feedback loop. If you only provide documents in English, you're most likely only getting responses for people whose, that's their primary language or their only language. So you, not to say that you're always going to change your survey approaches based on that, but you have to be thoughtful in your survey approaches. But in, in that example, if you would survey your, say, your program participants, you may have a trend line where, you know, in year one, you had a thousand participants, in year two, you had nine hundred, in year three, you had eight hundred, so you'd have this decreasing trend, and the inclination might be, okay, maybe our programs are bad, maybe there's something wrong, et cetera, we have this, this decrease. In fact, in talking to your, your customers, do that feedback survey, year one, eighty percent satisfaction, year two, eighty-one percent satisfaction, year three, eighty percent satisfaction, you have this sort of neutral satisfaction, so you would say, okay, maybe there's something else going on, maybe that's not that the, the program or the experience was bad, maybe there's something else that's happening. And then you go and find out, well, the time of that event has always been at ten o'clock, but some other thing now is showing up at ten o'clock on that same day, and parents can't go to that because they're going to take their kid to school, because that thing is now at ten, and so you start to have a, a totally different understanding of what that trend says. It wasn't because the experience was bad, it was because there was some other thing that was going on, and it caused you to ask those questions. So that, that's how the interplay of a, of a statistics and a, and a metric might interplay with each other.
Very good. Councilmember Washington, comment?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think you did a real good job, our staff did a really good job collecting all the data. I think it's more of like a brainstorming exercise to kind of like put as much information. But now, you, you, like you mentioned, the customer service, we could probably start looking at taking some of these items, put them inside of the functional group leads, like it's, whether it be finance, whether it be facilities, operation, public works, whatever, whatever the case is, each functional group now can take pieces of these and add it, and, and I'm sure that's something that Councilmember Joseph and I will probably sit down with the committee and, and kind of recommend, because now you take all this information, spread it across the board, and, you know, you being at the top, and then you have all your groups, your functional groups below, and you can now start on working on your, those dashboards that we were talking about, where you say, okay, let's, let's minimize, I mean, it looks like a lot of stuff right now, but once you sit there and group them into the functional groups, they, they make more sense. And then you start getting the data, and then, to your point, it depends, you know, if you have a crisis in the city, sometimes you get a lot of involvement in it, and if you don't, everybody's happy with what's going on, so you don't get that many people coming in, but still, you, you base it on the data, base it on the percentages, and I think you, it becomes a good tool. So I think it is a really good job that you guys did, I appreciate you putting this together for us to look at, and I look forward to working with Councilman Joseph with the committee in the future.
Very good. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, also, I'm excited, too, this, this is something I've been looking forward to, and, and I appreciate the opportunity that we had to meet with staff. And probably I would just have a couple of nuanced differences, first being that, that the KPIs really should be linked to the service level, as you mentioned. I never thought linking them to the goals was that compelling, because it, it really is defining, how well do we provide our services? So it's parks, rec, police, fire, et cetera. So to me, I think it's really important to just link it to either the department, or maybe the division, or whatever, because you're right, those units will move around over time, but, you know, parks may go to one or two different departments, but a park service level is always going to be with parks. So that's the first thing. The second one might just be a semantics. What you're calling metrics, I guess I would call a qualitative standard, that is, how well do we provide the service? So roads, as you mentioned, you know, if, if the pavement management index is high, it's a good piece of road, that's a good quality product. What you're calling statistics, maybe I would call a quantitative standard, and that is, using that lane miles, I would apply our budget or our staffing to create a ratio, to say, okay, what's it cost per lane mile to maintain? And so that's where I think those statistics come in handy. So if you have, you know, the city clerk's office has so many public records acts, so you, or whatever that workload lumps together, you know, take your budget, divide it by all that workload, and, and now you've got a cost per unit. And I think that's an important metric to look at for everything, because obviously, how well we, we, you know, our efficiency is important, but linking it to the qualitative is just as critical. Obviously, if we don't spend any money on our roads, we could say, gee, we're really efficient, but if our roads are going to hell in a handbasket, you know, it's that relationship. On the other hand, if we spend a lot of money on roads and they still don't get better, you know, maybe we're spending it on fixing everything that's, you know, gravel, and we're not investing at that, you know, before the waterfall and all that. So to me, if we work on a qualitative, you know, one or two qualitative metrics for each service, and then one or two quantitative, usually relating the budget to that service load, I think that would be really essential, because then you kind of get a good snapshot of how well we provide the service and how efficiently we provide it, and those two should be playing together, and then that gives information for the public to be able to evaluate and say, okay, I'm getting good bang for my tax dollar. So for me, I, that, that's kind of my general direction, similar to what you've said, maybe just like I said, nuanced a little differently. And then I am looking forward to getting back with the ad hoc committee to, to start wrapping this up. I'm looking forward to it being kind of plugged into the next budget. So all in all, I'm happy to see we're moving forward.
Very good. Any other comments from council? Council ready for public comment? Public comment is open. Anyone from the audience wishing to comment on this matter? Okay, do we have anybody in the queue?
I do not.
Okay, very good. We'll close public comment, return to council. This is an informational item, really appreciate the work that's been done on this. I think there's, at some point, with the earlier presentation, whatever platform we choose on it, there might be a way of integrating this into that system to make it easier to track, particularly if some of the service proprietary goes across departments. All right, Management Staff Oral Report.
Uh, Committee Development Director Cooper has an update for you about the upcoming planning commission.
All right.
Oh, good evening, City Council, members of the public and staff. I wanted to share with you our upcoming planning commission meeting on Thursday. We have two pretty exciting items on there you might be interested in. I know we've been working very hard with the long-term plan for undergrounding overhead utilities, and we're starting with addressing the condition for home-to-suites. The planning commission considered this in June, and continued the item, was where, where we are today, and the applicant has stepped up and proposed a much more extensive undergrounding effort that they're willing to take on. And so our public works director, Erica, has been working very hard with them, and also helping to quantify what might be an equivalent in Lufy. Our planner, William, has been kind of shuttling between the public works and the applicant, and, and it's been kind of a real teamwork here, and it's a very complex issue, and everyone's kind of worked And everyone's kind of worked together to come up with a solution and a plan B that ultimately we'll be bringing to the city council. So we have that to discuss on Thursday.
Can I, yeah, I was going to say.
The applicant has volunteered to coordinate undergrounding overhead utilities from South Napa Junction Road to Antonina, which is a really nice chunk. I think that's about seven poles altogether. So that'd be a really nice big piece.
Is he thinking of it as I'll front this and then there'll be a reimbursement agreement to pay him back?
That's correct, yes. They, they're obligated to pay for a portion, but they would also get a reimbursement above what would be their fair share.
Except who else is going to develop in that area though?
Well, that's the beauty of the applicant taking on undergrounding overhead utility poles from existing frontages that would otherwise just stay there. So it kind of gives us a jump on our comprehensive plan. It isn't the comprehensive plan, but it gives us a really nice jump. And having, you know, having somebody willing to take on a large piece is really great because it's hard to get mobilized for an overall comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan obviously is needed, but that too will take some time to get organized and mobilized. And here we have an applicant that's willing to do, take their share and then go a little further, really pretty much, you know, as a civic contribution towards a very important segment along the highway. So excited about that conversation. And then the city's received a pre-application and they expect.
Before you move on, I have a question. I'm sorry, my hand is up. Hi, I just have a question regarding undergrounding in general. I keep on seeing a commercial about, I guess it's the new CEO of PG&E introducing herself to everybody, talking about how it's more cost effective for PG&E to start undergrounding everything. So if PG, does, is PG&E going to come and start undergrounding stuff for us? Or is that commercial just something that sounds nice and rebuild their image? Do you, do you know anything about that?
Yeah, I'm happy to respond to that vice mayor Abadamos. We have had some preliminary conversations with PG&E officials. That commercial and what you've seen, what we've heard more directly from them, that their focus is on hazards, particularly wildfire hazards. So their, their focus is on areas of, of California, Northern California, where they have overhead wires that are near vegetation that could cause fires. And we don't have that case here. So there might be opportunities, you know, in, in the future, but their focus right now is in, in places where trees and wires don't mix.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then the other item we have is to discuss a pre-application that the city received. And we expect to have a conditional use permit submitted very shortly. And this is an idea to redevelop the Fabri statuary site with a car wash. I know that there's been, we had a workshop almost a year ago with the city council and planning commission regarding auto oriented uses. And with a conditional use permit, there is discretion to consider whether a use is appropriate in the location it's proposed. And so staff has been working very hard with the applicant on all the technical issues. So from a point of view, this would be the probably most attractive car wash you'll ever see. It would use recycled water. You know, it'll be everything we can possibly do to make this the best car wash possible, we would do. But the fundamental question is, is this the right place for a car wash in American Canyon? And the planning commission can't decide that on Thursday. And we're not asking them for that because it's not a public hearing. We don't have all the information. But I think in fairness to the applicant, it's a good idea to front end this question, to allow the planning commission to pose questions. Are you have any concerns? If they have any views? These are all, this is all public input in advance of an application being submitted. And that will help the applicant understand kind of the landscape, if they have any challenges. Applicants are always very optimistic people. So they often, you know, feel that, that, you know, their project is, is excellent, which in many ways, you know, it's, there are a lot of good things. So it'll be a very, I think, interesting intellectual discussion that enables the planning commission to serve its fundamental purpose to be the voice of our residents on the future of our city and what they'd like to see happen. And good feedback for the applicant so that they're not blindsided after we put them through a rigorous development review process.
Is that the statuary place? Is that the location?
It is.
Sad to see it transformed, but, but what the heck? It's their right to, to develop.
It is, but the, once again, the planning commission has discretion because the proposed use is one that allows the planning commission discretion to decide whether this is the right use in the right place. So, oh, and finally, one other thing, I think it's pretty important is, it's just come up, is the city's received a, a modify, a modification proposal for Watson Ranch to update things. So we're just received that and getting it sent up to staff and, and taking a look at it. So more to come for that.
Is that like a routine request or are we, is he suggesting that we turn it into something else?
I, I'd say it's some modification.
The subject, the council appointed a subcommittee while Vice Mayor Abadamos and Councilmember Washington sit on the subcommittee. So this is the work that, that group has already seen and looked at. So it's, it's an evolution. It's not radical changes. It's an evolution.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Hawley?
That's all from staff, mayor, thank you.
Okay. Move on now to our mayor council comments, committee reports, and then we'll take up future agenda items. Councilmember Joseph, anything further to add to yours?
A couple of things. One, I, I talked a little bit about a preview of our NBTA meeting tomorrow. But one item I forgot to mention is on the Measure T board. The good news is we're adjusting our revenue estimate from 23 million countywide to 25 million because sales tax is coming in better than they thought. So that will trickle down into more money for us to use. And staff is a little apprehensive, not, don't want to make it sound like, you know, money is pouring in. It could just be a, a one-time adjustment as we get out of the pandemic. The, the other one was, I was going to ask if our police chief could give us a quick report. I know that some of us knew about, over the weekend, there were some vehicle burglaries. And I was wondering if the police chief could give us a quick update on, on where things stand on that.
Chief Greenberg, please.
Good evening, mayor and council and members of the community. Yeah, as, as many of you may know, on Friday morning between like 3:00 AM and 5:00 AM, there was a huge rash of vandalisms and burglaries to vehicles. Some items were taken out of vehicles. When people woke up and found out their vehicles were broken into and or vandalized, obviously ACPD was called. We went out there, we started working on leads. Officers were able to identify a possible suspect vehicle and suspect from the help of the community with their surveillance cameras. And so detectives responded out, kind of took over the follow-up portion of the investigation and identified a 18-year-old out of Fairfield. And he was stopped. And during the vehicle stop, they located several items that were taken from vehicles here in American Canyon. The vehicles that were targeted were completely random, as far as we could tell, in the Via Bellagio area and then also a few residences over east of Shenandoah Park. He was booked in jail on several counts of vandalism and vehicle burg. He was, obviously, we all know the bail schedule these days is very lenient. The detectives put a, authored a bail enhancement, which the judge signed for $150,000. He was still in custody until this afternoon. He had a court appearance and he was released on his own recognizance with some terms and conditions, kind of like being on probation. So he has a future court date. We do have some leads on his accomplices and we're still following up on that. So again, I want to thank the community for all the help and providing us with all the video surveillance. It really helped the investigation. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yep.
My mic's off. I'll say it again, thank you, Chief Greenberg. Really appreciate your, your attention to the community and the response. And people of American Canyon really value the police force here.
I would echo that. We can't always prevent crimes from happening, but the more we can catch the bad guy, the, the better it is for everyone. And maybe it will slowly but surely deter criminals if they realize the odds of getting caught here are greater than somewhere else. So thank you for the report.
Okay, Councilmember Washington, anything to report?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilmember Oral?
Nothing to report, sir.
Vice Mayor Abadamos?
Sorry, my daughter's screaming in the background, so nothing to report tonight.
Well, that's probably a party report, isn't it? All the best with that. We've been there, done that, so.
Thank you. She, for, she's supposed to be asleep like an hour ago and it's not happening, so.
Oh, okay, well, your attention is rightfully directed elsewhere. Let's see, well, my report, I'd like to certainly mention the 9/11 memorial at the American Canyon Public Safety Building. We had, that was very moving. You know, remembering victims and their families and honor the brave, heroic sacrifices of our safety responders. And we will never forget them. The League of California Cities Conference in Long Beach, some very.